Okay, council members present and establishing a quorum, Councilmember Foulcher, Kenny Hanford, Davis Gamble, Fisher, and Scarborough.
All right, thank you. Before we begin, I noticed that Councilmember Kenny has got her microphone on. Councilmember Kenny, did you have something? Okay, thank you. All right, so we have everybody here and going to go ahead and ask Councilmember Gamble to lead us on the pledge. Thank you. Thank you. The next item that we have on the agenda this evening is public comments. This is a time set aside for members of the public to speak to the city council on any issue related to the city of Monroe, except any quasi judicial matter that is subject to a public hearing. Three minutes are afforded to each speaker. If you're interested in speaking to the city council this evening, please go ahead and raise your hand in the Zoom app if you're on the attendees list and remote. Otherwise, if you'd like to speak and you're here, please go ahead and raise your hand now. Okay, I see no hands here in chambers being raised. I also see no hands online, so we'll go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that item would be council member reports. And we'll start off with Councilmember Gamble. Councilmember Gamble? Gotcha. There you go.
Awesome. Just did that to throw me off, go on the opposite way there. Good. No, so I did not get it. I was not here last week, and so I didn't get a chance to just, I'm sure everybody gave their account of the National Night Out. It was just such a fantastic, you know, night out. Everybody just did a great job. Police force, you know, fire, just everybody that was represented, just fantastic. I can't tell you how many comments that we got, and I just got even in the neighborhood, you know, back when I went home, just how wonderful it was and some new folks that had moved in. So anyway, just a great job for everybody that was involved that did truly, truly showcased the jewel that we have there and just the overall community. So that's, that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Davis, go ahead.
Nothing to report this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Foulcher, go ahead.
I was with a group of people at Lake Ty Park on Sunday afternoon, and I have to say, we have just an awesome park there. I had a bunch of different groups all around us, all using different parts of the park, couple hundred people plus there. I just wanted to say kudos to the park. Good job, Mr. Farrell. And that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
On Thursday, the 11th, I attended the French Creek Joint Advisory Board meeting, so with several people here in this room and Ms. Hassert, and that was very enlightening. And that's it.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I texted the chief on the National Night Out that I was very bummed to miss my first night out due to COVID hitting our house. So I heard great things about it, but I'm looking forward to being there next year. I also got to witness two of the triathlons at Lake Ty and concur with the, just seeing how beautiful the parks are and how organized the meet was and our emergency response trailer parked out there. And it's just really neat to see. I also missed out on last week's meeting, unfortunately, and I just wanted to give my thanks. If you could pass on to Spencer Robinson. Spencer, for those that don't remember, he's on retiring last week. He was honored here, and I was really bummed to miss that. But Spencer was by my side when I had to deal with some very near death experiences with some of my kids. So he's really close to me, and he means a lot to me. So I'm really bummed to see him going off to Texas. But please pass that on to him. And I think that's it. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Hanford. Councilmember Fisher?
Good evening. Not a whole lot, just been really busy, kind of enjoying our community. I've had the chance to paddleboard the Sky River from Solton to Monroe a few times and just enjoy kind of what our city has to offer and our area has to offer. I love the flags out front, by the way. Those look amazing. And that is all I have for tonight.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Fisher. Councilmember Scarborough?
Nothing to report.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Scarborough. All right, councilmembers, we will now turn to the city administrator report, and we'll go ahead and call on Ms. Knight. Deborah, go ahead.
Great, thank you for the extended agenda. Looking forward to our meeting on August 23rd. Just a reminder to council that the P3 committee meeting has been canceled in order to hold a Transportation Benefit District meeting to discuss the 2023 Transportation Benefit District budget. So that will begin at 6:00 PM. At 7:00 PM for the council regular business meeting, we have a couple of proclamations, one for Monroe Fair Days and one for Labor Day. On the consent agenda, we have approval of the accounts payable, meeting minutes, the ordinance amending the municipal code Title 13 Stormwater Source Control, and then authorizing the mayor to sign a local agency consultant agreement with KBA for the US2 Non-Motorized Shared Path Construction Management Services. That project, as a reminder to council, will be starting after the fair at the end of August. We will have a public hearing for downtown commercial code amendments that was previously updated, council at the last meeting by Kate Turtolo. And then, under new business, we have the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee appointments with Rich Hebner, and employee handbook updates with Tyler Christian, and then reports from departments. Looking forward, then, to August 30th, we had tentatively scheduled a workshop retreat for the budget if needed. That's not needed at that time, at this time, so it will be canceled. And then, on 9/6 for Labor Day, we will not have a Public Safety Committee meeting and not have a regular study session. So hopefully, everybody enjoys their time off for Labor Day.
Does anybody have any questions about the extended agenda? All right, seeing them, we'll go ahead and move on to city administrators' report, 6.2.
Thank you. So again, just a reminder, the Transportation Benefit District Board will be meeting on August 23rd here at 6:00 PM. City offices will be closed on September 5th, and then the September 6th meeting is canceled. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Mayor's report this evening had a number of things that I worked on last week, and I really don't have anything to report out on this evening. So I'm going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. That'll be under discussion items. Item number seven, 7.1, 2021 Joint Legislative Audit and Review Committee Report on Public Records with Sheri Simonson. Sheri?
Mayor and council, I just want to take a moment, if you haven't had a moment, to introduce you to Patricia Pendry. She's the Police Administrative Manager, so she'll be here to answer any questions from the Police Department. And we also have in our Zoom attending, we have Commander Paul Ryan, and of course Deputy Chief Irving is here too. So basically, just wanted to kind of give you an overview of our last year numbers, and it's set with the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Committee. And so JLRK is the state reporting system that kind of helps determine the performance measures and tracks the different points for public records and records management. Cities and counties and districts were talking about the demand for these kinds of numbers, and there just wasn't a lot of information. And so they decided to kind of better understand the period compliance is to kind of put this together. So basically, any, any organization in the state that has over, spends over $100,000 has to fill out this report. And so, again, since 2017, we've been kind of tracking costs, staff time, and response times. So these are a look back for 2020, because those are already computed at the state level. So there was 232 agencies that responded to 336 roughly public records requests. There was $87 million spent responding to public records and 4.8 million spent on litigation. So what does that look like for our numbers? So for the city of Monroe, in 2020, we had just a little over 1,095 public records requests. And in 2021, you can see that we've kind of jumped up to 1,237. So basically, that's about 103 requests, give and take, a month that we handle. So we kind of wanted to point out some departments that had some increases from 2020 to 2021. As you can see, the Police Department, Community Development, Public Works, the Clerk's Office, and the Court all had kind of some significant increases that we wanted just to kind of share with you. So not all requests.
Sheri, if you could hold a second.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Councilmember Gamble. It's okay.
I just, when I see data, I get all excited.
Oh.
Everybody knows this about me. I'm just, I was just interested when, when I see, you know, the uptick in requests. And I mean, do we have this broken out by, like, unique? How many individuals behind those requests?
So we're going to show you in the next couple of slides, we're going to break down kind of like some examples of some of the bigger requests that we're working on. Again, I only pulled out the departments that had kind of some pretty high increases. So that was kind of a breakdown.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, is that, so there's like 906 requests in 2020. Is that 906 individual different people? Or could there be 906 requests that would be, maybe there's 20 people that made 906 requests?
It's each individual request.
Okay, so that's 906 distinct different people, not somebody making additional requests?
Well, you could have people make multiple requests, which we've seen that. But we, we log each request as it's separate.
Got it. So that's what I'm interested in.
Oh, gotcha. I'm sorry.
We, if we have, if any of the increase is due potentially to just specific individuals or interest groups, or whatever the case may be, do we track that?
We do some general tracking, like when we have inmate requests, and that was not attributed to the numbers that we saw for this year.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Anybody else have any questions before we move on? Go ahead and continue. Thank you.
Sure. So we do break down kind of like, how many days does it take us to respond to requests? And as you can see, a large portion, we're able to fulfill the requests in less than five days. And that's not a strategy that we all try to employ, is because we want to give really good customer service. And so we try to do that. But there are a large number too that are very complex. They take legal review and involve thousands of records. And so that is about 277 out of the total that were large and complex. So our system breaks down kind of like the average cost of the requests. And as you can see, for 2021, it's $221 is kind of an average. 2020, it was $92.34. And I'll, in a further next slide, I'll kind of explain where we see the increase. Cost recovered from requesters is only $662, because we're not able to charge for staff time, legal review. There's a lot of things that we're not able to charge for. So it's just the basic cost that it costs the city to produce those records.
Before we move on, Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
No, thank you.
Okay. Please continue. Thank you.
So what we wanted to do, and this is one of the reasons I invited Manager Pendry to come, is to kind of walk you through an example of a large request. So Community Development, so I, as a public records officer, I try to pull in as many records and do a review for the department. So I had 10,000 emails that I had to sort through, and I was able to move forward only 800 to the department. And, but we also had other electronic records that we had to pull in and process. We spent about 40 hours with five different staff members before the requestor abandoned the request. So we, the city, we estimate, we spent about $2,500 responding, and the requestor paid $2.05, and they chose not to pay for another installment of $3. And so ultimately, we probably would have had a lot more time invested in that request, but since they didn't pay for their installment, we were able to close the request. So the Police Department, we wanted to give you an example of kind of what their records look like. So, and these are again for 2021, or 2020, sorry. So they processed seven police report, or 21, seven police reports, 65 photos, 124 emails, and 2,500 pages of a 12,000-page report. And they estimate that they had $1,500 in staffing costs in '21. The requestor paid $1.84, and this request is ongoing into '22, 2022. There's 9,500 pages still to review, 42,000 instant messages, 24 audio, and 17,000 images, and 343 videos. So what this doesn't kind of really share is every, especially with the Police Department records, every single line has to go line by line to make sure there's nothing that we have to take out and not give out to the public. And so it's a very, very, very careful review. Editing video is very, very time consuming. And so when they have to hit to those videos, it's going to be a very large strain. So we just kind of wanted to show you like, what does a large request look like? And so these were two examples that we can show.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Right.
So we kind of wanted to give you just a kind of glimpse of what we're kind of seeing trending in for, from last year to this year. This is not calculated in the JLRK report, but it was just kind of an interesting thing that we kind of noticed. So the gray, the darker gray and the light gray kind of shows the 2021, our number of requests by month. And then the black shows where we are for this year. And the white is what we call a carryover request. And what that means is, the request is so large, we can't finish it in that month, and so it gets carried over into the next month. So as you can see, that white has continued to grow along with the black. So what that means is, those are more and more complex requests that we're managing with staff time.
Okay, thank you.
So now, one of the questions that we have to respond to the state is kind of like, what is our estimated stock money that we're actually spending? And so for a public records request, you can see there's a little bit of an increase. And this includes staff compensation, legal review, the software next request, which handles all of our public records. And then we apply a 2.5% overhead rate, which was recommended by finance, and that's for copier costs, IT support, you know, just regular, all the things that we need to kind of get those things going. Records management, we also saw a little bit of an increase. This is again for staff compensation, retaining records, equipment, hardware, software, and services, and plus that 2.5% overhead rate. Part of the increase that you see from '20 to '21 is that we saw that the Community Development and Public Works Departments were having a larger draw on their staff time. So we pulled in some of their staff time and included their staff time. And also, we hired, we got a city clerk, and then hired me to help with public records for the city as a part-time person. So those kind of contributed to that increase of costs that you see there.
Okay, before you go on to the next one, Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
Sheri, very nice of you to say a small increase, but it looks to me like from 103 to 277,000 is over double, and less so under records management. But that seems like a very large increase to me. Then the next question may come up sooner or later, is do we have the staffing to handle the increase? And I don't see a 2019 figure, so I can't see a complete trend. I'm sure when you show us 2022, we may be a little more shocked, and the question will come up again. Are we looking at a staffing shortage to deal with this?
Well, I think those are kind of all the things. One of the reasons why we wanted to bring this data forward to you is, should there be budget enhancement requests or things like that coming to you in the future? You kind of understand kind of where some of our costs are. And so we increased some of our Police Department staffing time, because they, they've shown quite a bit of an increase. And so that's was another part of the reason we increased that. But it was really bringing in some of the Community Development staff. There, they've been averaging 10 to 20 requests a month, and they're very large and involved. And so we felt it was time to start including their time as well.
And Councilmember, that's one of the things, council members, that's one of the things that we're looking at right now, is do we need to increase the staffing there to help out with that volume? So again, that's one of the budget enhancement requests that, that administration and I are looking at at this time. Any other questions on that slide before we move on? All right, go ahead and continue. Thank you.
So we just kind of also wanted to share just some program highlights, so you can kind of see some of the things that we're working on. Again, in 2021, we filled the city clerk position, which is very important, and also the police manager's position. Both of these positions are really important as we are managing all these records. And then, of course, I'm able to help assist. And then, we are also doing a kind of a citywide public records training. We, we did that at the Police Department for all new employees, but now we're kind of going to go through and do all departments here by the end of the year. So all of our employees will be trained. And then we've also got the public records liaison meeting started back up again. And so we try to have a training component at that meeting, and then kind of talk about some of our challenges and any potential things that we can do to kind of solve problems too. And we are now managing all of our records inside of our next request system. We are doing emails and text messages within SMARSH, and our social media is now our Twitter, Facebook, YouTube, is all with archive social. So all these different tools help us maintain the records for the links that we need to maintain them, and also have them available should we need to do a public records request. We also did meet with Attorney General's Office, who has a public records consultation program, and we kind of met with them for several hours to kind of do an overview of our city, kind of share what we're doing and how we're doing it, and our policies and procedures. And they had some very, very minor suggestions about making some buttons bigger on our website. But basically, they were overall very impressed with the program that we're presenting here at the city. And then, again, we tried to conduct routine records destruction. We've been inventorying paper files and quarter, and doing quarterly audits of city records, electronic tracking system. And basically, what that is, is we go into the systems that are tracking all of our employees' text messages and cell phones and all of those media, and we just confirm and do testing to make sure all those things are capturing. We've seen some other cities locally that have had some issues with text messages and other emails and different things. And so we want to make sure we're trying to protect our records as best that we can. And finally, we just kind of want to shot, kind of share some of our goals for next year. We want to continue digitizing paper records and transfer eligible records to the state archives. We also applied for a records management grant, and we're waiting to see if we are able to get that grant. We have to prepare for the increase of the commission to police officers wearing body cameras. So we've had a small program, and now we're increasing that program. So that's going to be a huge demand on staff time at the Police Department. We're working to create a citywide records management policy, and then it's time for us to kind of do a review of our Public Records Act policy. We're going to be evaluating SharePoint versus Laserfish. Those are electronic content management systems, and we're going to try to find the most efficient way to have records available possibly to the public without facing portals, but also internally to our own staff as well, and look for the most efficient way that we can save money. And then we are going to evaluate for the same reasons, SMARSH versus Microsoft 365e Discovery for email management. We're going to try to look for some cost savings there with reviewing those two different systems. And again, as the mayor mentioned, we're evaluating staffing levels to manage and respond to the public records requests as well as records management. And then we're going to continue to develop and train public records liaisons throughout the city.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have any questions, council? Go ahead, Councilmember Gamble.
So can we go back?
Yes.
To the data, there's, something's not adding up. I'm just trying to figure it out.
Yes.
If we go back to, because it says 1237 on the, for, what's its slide? Is it slides six?
Here?
Yeah. But when I go, when I look at the next slide, 2021, all of the ones that are listed there, that adds up to more than 1237.
So what we're doing is, we're just demonstrating some departments that had increases. And the, the difference in the numbers is, one request might have Police Department, it might have City Hall, and it might have the Court. So multiple departments responding to one request.
One request, it hits multiple departments.
Got it. So
So this is total number of requests
Okay.
that we received. And then this is by department. And again, there's crossover. So you might get some duplication there.
Okay, now that makes sense why that wasn't adding up. I appreciate that clarification.
Sure.
And then basically, what we're saying is, is that, well, at least for last year, it's about 22% that is the more in-depth, everything else is done within five days.
Correct.
I'd be very much interested in seeing more, because that was the other thing I had written down. I mean, once the pub, the request is made, that's public record on who the requestor is.
Yes.
I would love to see the breakdown on the larger requests to understand, like, where are those requests coming from? What's, you know, it about, what's that 20% that's taken up all of our, you know, our time? For a couple of different reasons, obviously, is there things that we could be doing that couldn't potentially stop that type of, you know, request coming in? But I would be kind of interested to see that, know if that's the only one or not.
So on the, for example, on that Community Development request that we worked on, we did have a lot of staff time, but we had subsequent requests for that same material. So we're able to redirect people to what the work we'd already done. And generally, we just kind of talk people through and say, you know, here's all the information that we gave on this request, and does that help you get what you need? And then if there's anything else, you know, let us know. So we are working to try to redirect people when we have invested that time. These numbers also include collision reports. So every time there's a collision in the city, you might have three requests, insurance, different, two different insurance companies. The driver might come in, you know, the other driver. So there's four requests for basically the same material. We have requestors who come every month, and they ask us for the same data every month. We want all the collision reports from this time to this time. So we have a lot of routine requestors that come back month after month, but I would be happy to kind of look at that and get back to you on that.
Yeah, I mean, bring that forward. Your, yeah, your explanation on that just drove me to like, so we spend that initial investment, but then it's when the subsequent is request on the same information, and that's helping your five
Yes.
lower the
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Excited at data. I look at this, I want to understand.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, of course.
Staff will bring it forward then.
Oh, cool. That'd be great. Thanks.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else shared before I go to the next council member?
No, no.
Sounds good. Next council member would be Councilmember Hanford. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, if you could send that information to all council.
It'll be sent to all council members, yes.
That'd be great. The question I had was, is there any law or rule that says that we have to respond within a certain amount of days? And what is that?
Well, it, we have to respond within five days, but that response can vary between telling them, here's your record, or telling them, we're not clear what you're asking for, or it could be say, this is going to take us some time, so we can get back to you in two weeks, three weeks, four weeks. We do categorize the number of requests, what we call a category four request as an example, that's in our city policy. We give those people monthly installment. So we're only going to work on this request once a month. We're going to give you a monthly installment. Because it's so large, it's going to carry over, which is why on that Police Department example, that request came in last year, but we're still working on it this year, because we only give you monthly installment. So the city's only required to spend a certain amount of time per request, but we really try, if we know that people have deadlines or things that they're trying to do, we really work hard. And so we might have a big push, you know, within a couple of weeks, just to try to get the citizen as many, or resident as many things as they need as quickly as we can. But sometimes it's just so, so much volume, we've got to move it from month to month.
Yeah, thank you. That makes sense. I, I guess I would, I'm interested to see what the 2022 numbers end up being, and with the, with the police wearing body cameras at all times. If there's going to be a huge spike in that, I think we're really going to have to talk about if staffing to, to support public records requests, where that's going to, where are our values? where our value is for our city, if our values all in public records requests or if it's in planning and making sure other departments are running smoothly. So something that we need to be thinking about. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanford. I saw that there was another hand up earlier. Does anybody else on council have a question?
No, I just wanted to. No request also.
Okay, staff will provide that. Thank you. All right, any other questions from council? All right.
Well, thank you for taking the time to listen to this information that we're that we have to bring forward to you. And we hope to every year kind of bring you these numbers so you can kind of see what we're trending on and what we're working on next.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Campbell, go ahead.
No, I was just going to thank you. A lot of hard work goes into this. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right, thank you. Next item then we have is under discussion items 7.2. This is proposed updates to Monroe Municipal Code, Chapter 10.18 Motorized Foot Scooters. And this will be Jacob Roberts. So Jacob, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. We're here tonight to talk about motorized foot scooters. Next slide, please. What is on the agenda for tonight in this code update basically is discussion of directing potentially it opening up the restriction that is on motorized scooters in the city of Monroe right now. As it stands, they're not allowed to be ridden on any property other than private. So they're basically not allowed whatsoever. It's also directed at updating the code to mesh up with RCW and WAC so applicable state law. Next slide, please. What we're not talking about tonight, or this is not intended to establish, is a motorized scooter sharing program or a rental program. So like your Lime Bikes or or some of those other ones you've seen out there, the various colors, they are blue, green, whatever it is. And also, this is not intended to act as a first step in any kind of a public-private partnership arrangement. So really, we're talking about the recreational user, the person who uses the scooter for transportation or the visitor to Monroe. We're really not talking about business. So now to give you the background, the reason why this came up, a presentation was given to EDAB by a a business that wants to enter into an arrangement with a local entrepreneur to start a scooter business here in Monroe. That may or may not be a rental business, but again, that's really not what we're talking about. That's why this came forward. However, when looking at it, there is some legitimacy to maybe making some code changes here because transportation has really changed since 2005 when this code was enacted. We really didn't have the hybrid. The Prius was kind of a new thing in 2005. We didn't have electric vehicles. We didn't have Watt TVs, which are now allowed in Monroe on our city streets. And, you know, so the things that people use to get around now are not the same as they once were. And scooters can be a much more affordable and portable option for people to get from point A to point B. So it's a lower barrier to entry. Next slide, please.
Just a second, Jacob.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Councilmember Campbell.
I just wanted to point, I mean, because when I read through the entirety of this, it almost, I mean, there wasn't an electric scooter. I mean, the way that I'm reading this, there was nowhere in the world, oh, like it's motorized, even talks about like a combustion. It's almost like it was designed towards more of the, like the old school, you know, start the lawnmower type scooter as opposed to an electric. Although the beginning of the presentation has an electric scooter on it.
Yes.
I didn't see, and I was looking in the depth, in the definitions, and I never saw a definition when we talked about mo, what's a motorized scooter?
Yeah.
That it called out electric. So it's, I I would actually make the argument if I was, you know, an attorney or something like that, that it doesn't say it anywhere from electric. It's infernal.
That may or may not be correct. So let's keep going through the code. I believe it may. I'm not going to call it and say that it isn't right, but I think.
Actually, you could, I mean, it's off in there, but I I tried to find it.
Yeah. So as we move into this next slide, oh.
Go ahead, Jacob. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll I'll defer my questions to the end of your presentation, but I have several. Okay.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Jacob before he continues? All right, thank you. Go ahead.
You bet. So potential impact to residents and scooter users. Scooters would offer a reduced financial barrier, as I mentioned earlier. Ownership and operation compared to an automobile or some of those other options that are out there. It would reduce vehicle miles traveled. So the impact on roads would go down if people were using them more regularly. It could create an increase in parking space in business areas. Obviously, a scooter is more like a bicycle. You're not taking up a spot in that downtown parking area. Reduction in fuel consumption, pollution being the same. And then, lastly, increased access to transit services. So if you can't get to the park and ride, you can make it to a bus stop. Scooters are easily transportable by CT buses. So they've got the the racks on the front and you can put them up there and go on your your paths to work or wherever you're headed. So next slide, please. So potential impact to service delivery. Individual users may not follow road safety rules, increase calls for service by police and fire. I feel like now's a good time to mention Deputy Chief Irving and I have discussed this more than once. And it didn't seem to be of significant concern to police as far as an enforcement issue based on past practice. So they haven't had a lot of interaction with people that are not following road safety rules and using scooters, albeit against municipal code in Monroe. But nonetheless, a potential increase in insurance claim made to the city risk pool based on increased number of users. So this really isn't an increase in liability based on the usage. In other words, if you're using a bike or a scooter, our insurer WCIA essentially assumes those are kind of the same thing because they operate the same speed range. They're very similar types of vehicles. So the the number of users may go up, which may then increase our risk profile, but it's not the type of usage. Does that make sense to everyone? Okay. Potential increase calls for service to public works and parks, failed and abandoned units or, you know, left behind. And then lastly, depending on number of user users, in the future, as we expand our complete streets program and we're doing new road design, we may need to include infrastructure to account for parking or storage of these types of things in the right of way. We do already account for bicycles and some other things through complete streets. So I don't see this as being a large departure. But as we open, if we were to open this door as a city, then we would probably need to consider that as we go into future road design. Next slide, please. So current code comparison versus proposed code. I've tried to highlight the the most important things in dark text for you there. This one's kind of more really almost a definition, but essentially two, two wheels, and it can be stood or sat on in the old code. In the new code, it says two or three wheels and it could, and it's to be stood upon while riding. The new code is more consistent with Washington State law. Attorney Lowell actually inserted this section of definition for me. So it does, it does say Councilmember Campbell, electric motor or internal combustion engine in that section there. I don't think it was in the definition, so. So. No, it is.
One moment. Go ahead and counsel.
Yeah, no, it's there. I I see it now. I thought I missed it in the in the strikeout section because the strikeout was the elimination.
Gotcha.
I thought that the we were putting in the electric piece, but we'll talk about that.
Sure.
Jacob, before you move off of this one, I have seen single wheeled scooters around town that that are motorized or electric. Would that, does that fall under this?
That's a very good point.
One.
The one wheel. Yeah.
Those are awesome.
Okay, so just, just.
I'll take a look at that before this comes back.
Yeah, thank you. All right, Councilmember Campbell, I still have you having the floor. Do you have? All right, Council, Councilmember Roberts.
I'll take it.
Go ahead.
So current code, it is unlawful to operate a motorized foot scooter on city-owned property, as I said at the beginning. Proposed code, it basically allows for the operation, but not at a speed greater than 15 miles per hour. So and then as this translates into parks, which Director Farrell and I have been talking about, the park code requires 10 miles an hour. So we're going to make some minor changes if council decides to bring this back. That part will be updated as well. So next slide, please. Current code allows you to operate a scooter on a sidewalk if you're exiting or leaving somewhere. It does not have a speed limit on it, state law, and now this this section of code maximum speed of five miles an hour. So that one's pretty straight ahead. And next one there, current code. It is unlawful to ride a scooter, to ride a scooter in a marked bicycle lane. New code, rather than marked bicycle lane, we're using a a public path trail or something that is not designated for bicycle use. So that loosens that a little bit, makes it less specific. So it opens it up a little bit more to be able to use in areas where basically bicycles are able to be used. And last slide, just discussion, gather input from the council and the mayor and then consideration. I'm thinking early in September, we would probably come back at the next business meeting. So not next week's, but a few weeks out. Mayor, that concludes my presentation. Turn it back to you.
All right, thank you very much, Jacob. All right, councilmembers, Councilmember Campbell, go ahead.
So I was interested in why it was going so close is the the restrictions that we've put on minors. So it's illegal for, the way I'm reading it right now, for a child that, I mean, they sell like hotcakes over at Walmart. You know, and and right on the thing, it says for ages six to 15. To ride that, in fact, Deputy Chief Irving's supposed to confiscate it for him and their parents got to come and get it from him. That's the way the code is written today if they're writing it in the park, correct?
I believe you are correct, yes.
I would like to look at that. Major. Way that the code, way that the code is written, basically, where no one under the age of 16 is allowed to operate one of these on any, basically anywhere that this code applies. So electric scooters that are designed for, and the part that makes no sense to me is that they can ride one without a motor and they're going to go faster in 10 miles an hour. I've seen it. You know, just the the bush one, where they could ride a bike and the same deal, but they can't do the electric. It just doesn't make any sense to them.
So we'll have staff look at that also. Any objection? Right.
Cool. Thanks.
Right. Thank you. Anything further, Councilmember Campbell?
Nope, that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
Yeah, Jake and I had a conversation yesterday about this to some degree. And all of the things that have been discussed between Councilman Hanford and Gamble here weren't part of the conversation. However, my question would be, how feasible is it to enforce the 10 mile an hour speed limit? And how feasible, even if it were 15? And then one of the reasons I talked to Jacob was the city's liability. When somebody on one of our bike paths falls off this thing and then wants to sue the city because they hit a bump in the road. And then the other thing, oddly enough, today at about 2:45 downtown Monroe, I was helping my wife move boxes of stuff out of her antique stall into the truck. And here came a kid, young man, actually, on one of these scooters, and he was doing well over 10 miles an hour and probably maybe over 15. He's on the sidewalk and he didn't give a darn about somebody else being on the sidewalk. All he cared about was hauling butt up the street. I made eye contact with him and he didn't care. It was up to me to get out of his way. So I have some concern. We don't really let bicycles ride down our sidewalks, I don't think, in town. And we want to have these scooters riding around here doing 15 or 10, 15 miles an hour. I don't know what they have for brakes. I don't know what they have for anything. I don't know anything about them. And I don't know what our liability is going to be. As I talked with Jacob yesterday, I talked about an incident out in the Frylands where a pedestrian tripped over a bump in the asphalt due to a tree root that grew across there. And her inquiries to the city and the city was very helpful. But her inquiries were, how do I get restitution or help with my medical bills and my dental bills? So with that in mind, my mind goes to what happens when one of these scooters does it? I don't know what incidents we've had with bicyclists. I don't have a report on that. But, you know, bicyclists are generally in the street. They ride in the lane of traffic that cars go. They stop for signals or are supposed to. They stop or are supposed to stop for stop signs. And I would think if we're going to implement something like this, that these scooters would have to do the same thing. But I'd give a dollar to a dime to say they won't. So I have real concerns. And I keep hearing that it doesn't go with the code with the rest of the state or whatever it is. But I have concerns about what's going to happen when we say this is okay.
Okay, thank you. Jacob, did you have anything to offer on any of that for clarification or?
I I think there were a couple of questions in there that might have been staff appropriate. So.
Okay.
Councilmember Scarborough, the code update as proposed and actually as it currently stands, the individual that was riding on the sidewalk actually shouldn't have been riding on the sidewalk. So the the code as it's written and also proposed doesn't allow for that unless the scooter rider is entering or leaving a private property. So essentially that perpendicular movement from like a car would do turning into a driveway. That, and so that I can speak to that. I think as far as the enforcement goes, I would definitely kick it over to Deputy Chief Irving, who, thank you for showing up this evening. You must have had a feeling. So I appreciate that and I'll send it over that way, Mayor. Redirect.
Deputy Chief?
I think it's going to be very difficult for us to enforce this.
Deputy Chief, for the recording, can you lean in to the microphone?
My apologies.
No worries. You can move closer if you like.
Thanks. I'm new at this.
I know.
I think it's going to be difficult for us to enforce it. Jacob and I have spoken multiple times regarding previous enforcement on the current code. I can find no examples of us having to enforce scooter violations on city streets or sidewalks.
I'm sorry.
Councilmember Scarborough, I will allow that you still have the floor since he's responding to questions that you had.
Thank you.
Just a second, Councilmember Deputy Chief, did you have anything further?
No, sir.
Okay, Councilmember Scarborough, go ahead.
Did I understand, Jacob, that the bike path is the appropriate place for these scooters to be?
That's one of the appropriate places, yes. There are other options to be in the right of way, so in the traveled roadway on certain roads that are less than 25 miles an hour.
I can understand that working. Do I understand that that's a point of contention with bike riding people? Are bike riders afraid of these electrical two-wheelers in their bike path?
I'll say as a bike rider and a walker and a used to be runner, I wouldn't have a problem with one of them myself. So I think that you're going to get a different response depending upon who you talk to that is a user of the facility. So. I don't know, staff feels differently.
I'll point to a history of mine in San Diego where a bike rider and a pedestrian walking their child in a buggy, you know, the stroller collided on the back path causing the bike person to be paralyzed from the neck down for the rest of his life. So just having said that, there is potential, I think, of conflict between those two users just as a history. So. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. And staff, anything further? You had, you were responding to questions. All right.
Yeah.
Councilmember Hanford, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So there's just a couple of things. First of all, can you clarify what you're suggesting? So walking around, say, Lake Tye. So a motorized scooter would not be allowed to go around Lake Tye? Or would be allowed to go around Lake Tye on the on the pedestrian path?
I need to defer to our park staff. I actually don't know whether or not Lake Tye is a designated bike trail. I do know people ride their bikes on it, but I don't know whether it's designated as such. Mayor?
Go ahead, Mr. Farrell. You are seat 15. Just a second. There you go.
Thank you, Mayor. Evening, Council. Yeah, I'd like to speak to the just existing uses allowed on the trails, pathways. There's a, there's a vehicle use restriction in our park code. And so it's unlawful to drive, to ride or drive, I'm sorry, any bicycle, tricycle, motorcycle or motor vehicle over through any park except upon park driveways, parkways, boulevards at a speed in excess of 10 miles per hour. So I just want to make the point that, you know, we have an existing speed limit in the park. And as far as then specifically to paths, is in particular, it shall be unlawful for anyone to drive off of roads or vehicle right of way and motorcycles and four-wheel drive vehicles. Should not be authorized to use any parked paths or other roads other than roadways for ingress or egress to and from a park. So basically, the existing use on our paths are for pedestrians, motorized wheelchairs, bicycles. So it's a shared use. And so considering motorized, like a scooter of whatever, you know. And, uh, so considering motorized, um, like a scooter, um, of, of whatever, you know, um, combustion or, or electric. Um, I, I feel as staff that it's important to keep the ten mile, uh, an hour speed limit because that's currently what, what we have. So whether it's a scooter or a bicycle, yes, there's a potential for a conflict. And we have not fortunately experienced something like, like Councilmember, um, Scarborough described. Um, but that's not to say that that cannot happen. And I think that if something like this, I think just in general, if we, if our pathways, let's say at Lake Ty or Sky River Park, start to get more congested, then we would be looking to, um, to, you know, uh, potentially come back to council and, and, uh, and, and request maybe adding some more safety measures, like whether we stripe a divided, a divided middle line down the pathway or something that, you know, might sort of help things out or specify specific types of uses on the trail, which obviously it's like, what can you, you know, do, use on the trail as far as a, a bike? Are we going to ban bikes or something like that if we get a congestion issue? And, and or scooters if we're allowing scooters. So anyways.
Does that answer your question, Kevin?
Yeah, so just, just to verify, so any of those, as long as you're going under ten miles an hour, you're fine with. Okay, thank you. That, that does answer my question. Uh, the single wheel, the one wheel that we talked about earlier, that's not on this and I, I would like to see this stat on there. I, I have called, uh, I have seen two different times a person on a sing- single wheeled Segway, whatever you call it, like headphones on, angled like he's a skier. Probably twenty-five, thirty miles per hour, just could care less if a car is gonna pull out. And it's pretty, uh, on Blueberry Lane and Frylands or one fifty-fourth. So that's, that's concerning to me. No helmet, you know? So I would definitely wanna see that involved in there as well. The second thing that I wanted to bring up, which is a little bit different, but while we're on that, while we're on this, I've gotten emails about, uh, from citizens and I've had citizens talk to me about concerns about the, some of the trails going all through the Frylands where roots are poking up the asphalt. And so this is prodding me to, you know, it kinda goes along with it. Uh, something that we need to look at, put on a future agenda or talk, if you have a quick answer for it now, Mike, that's great. But, uh, I just wanted to bring that up.
All right. Thank you. Uh, we'll have, uh, staff look into the, the secondary question there about the paths. So, thank you. Um, one of the things that I think that I'd like staff to, to look at, just in case it comes up on the number of wheels is, um, whether or not even matters the number of wheels, because the technology changes, right? And we may have Marty McFly might show up with no wheels, right? And so the, the thing is, um, whether it's, whether it's one wheel hoverboard, I know we're excited, right? So it, it may be that the number of wheels is not relevant, but perhaps, you know, I, I think about Woodinville, they've got those party bicycles there. There might be some other standard that we need to look at, but maybe the number of wheels is not what's relevant, but maybe there's some other standard that's appropriate. So, okay. And if you find a hoverboard, uh, please let me know. I, I don't know that I'd be the first to, to ride it standing up, but maybe sitting on it. I, I could do that. Um, all right. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Hanford, and we will now move to Councilmember Fulcher.
Um, I know that in our, um, like our Park Pros, um, questionnaire, some times that we've had, uh, basically open mic time, you know, at, hearing from people about recreation in Monroe, there's always this complaint about there's nothing for the kids to do. This is something for the kids to do and I'm stinking excited to see all of the opportunities to get kids out in public, having fun, being away from their computers, honestly. Um, I am not interested in making ordinances based on worst-case scenario. And, um, I think we need to remember, we are Monroe. The adventure starts here. So let us not shut down adventure for the sake of overcaution. So I'm appreciating all of this, all this discussion tonight.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Kenny, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, this is a great discussion. Um, thank you, Councilmember Fulcher. I agree. A couple of things, I think, since we're opening this up and, you know, talking about multi-wheeled, uh, vehicles, we need to throw e-bikes in there. I don't know if e-bikes are part of our code or if that's even mentioned, but they are another potential, um, use here in the city. And, um, also just wanted to share that I am a heavy user of Lake Ty path. I live in the Fryland, so I'm on those trails all the time. I run, you know, multiple times a week and I'm out there. And I have run into about every scenario there is in terms of sharing the path. And I think that we need to give our citizens some credit and know that, you know, if I've got somebody with a bike approaching me and I'm running and I've got headphones on or whatever, um, kindness goes a long way and courtesy and all of that, and people really will accommodate one another. And I think that we need to trust in our path users and our, you know, folks going around Lake Ty that if they see, you know, someone coming their way, they're gonna step aside. I usually greet everyone and we say hello and good morning and things like that. So just for the record, I think that putting faith in our people is also really important too. And knowing that some of these conflicts may be resolved by people just being kind to one another. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Kenny. Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
Appreciate all the comments and the discussion. Obviously, we were excited to see it come back, um, and have more discussion is what I'm, is what I'm hearing. Um, and I would just add, I mean, it, where I always get tripped up is that, because I look and I go, I don't see any difference between an electric and propelled other than the, there it's electric, right? I mean, it's illegal to go over ten miles an hour with a self-propelled, but you can do it, right? And it's illegal to speed on a bicycle. Just ask the mayor, you got a ticket nineteen eighty-eight at UCD. So, uh, to the point.
Okay, it was a warning. Did you know you're going over fifteen miles an hour on the campus? No, officer, I didn't know you could pull me over for that. Thank you.
There is, I appreciate, I appreciate the comments about, hey, we, we always need to take into consideration, what's the liability? Um, but we have liability every day. This is happening, you know, already. Uh, and so I don't see that was the same conversation for me personally, like when we were talking about ATVs and, and people were really against, you know, a quad versus a motorcycle. I'm like, motorcycles are already allowed. Right? Probably safer to be on a quad than it is on the, you know, low speed, that type of stuff. The other examples I would use is a snowboard park or a snowboarding. That was just gonna kill the skiing deal and it was just all kinds of liabilities that they'd have no business being up there. Heck, that's all you can find up there now. And, uh, so I think we gotta give credit, like you're, you're saying, we worked through this. Um, even this, the skateboard park that we put in town, when we did that, it was a lot of pushback. Oh, my God, it's gonna go, you know, you know, type of deal. But it's, it's part of the shining jewel that is Lake Ty. That thing gets used just an absolute ton. Uh, and yes, you know, it's great to have kids out and that the piece I'll end with is, is being a coach and being involved with kids at school and giving lots of rides home because people don't have cars, kids don't have cars and parents can't get there to get them. You know, this is, this is an affordable thing and I see it today and I didn't realize, shame on me, of course, two thousand and five, I'm not gonna be too hard on myself, that it, it's illegal, but that's a way for a kid to get home after practice or whatever the case may be. Um, that's great. So I'm all for, let's take a, let's take a look at this. We know what's the risks, you know, that are out there, but they're out there today. And, yeah, I wanna see the one wheel thing too. But I wanna see it because I think it's, it's great.
Thank you, Councilmember Gamble. Councilmember Fisher, go ahead.
So I just feel like I have to talk to everybody else did and I didn't. Um.
I was gonna call on you and.
So I, I would just, uh, speed it up a little bit. Um, I love the idea of getting people outside. The more we can get people outside, the more we can get them connected with other people, um, the better. This is gonna obviously have to be some kind of a living document or code of some sort, and we're gonna have to make some changes along the way. But, um, yeah, I, the idea of having people outside and using different ways to get around town, enjoy all the stuff that we have here, um, I think is very, very good. And I think that we should probably keep looking into this. So there's my little short, my short statement with all of you guys.
Thank you, Councilmember Fisher. Councilmember Davis, would you like to say a few words?
Certainly. Might as well. Um, when I, when I first read this, I, uh, my response was, hmm, yeah. Mm-hmm. What about that? Because I get down to Lake Ty almost every day. And it's there. They're everywhere. You've got electric bikes, you've got electric scooters, you've got one wheels zipping up and down the, the bike path back there.
Hoverboard yet?
Okay. Not yet, but I, I'll call you as soon as I see one. But, uh, and so, I, I mean, it just seemed like to me a natural progression of things and I, I'm, I'm not even thinking, but what about that? It just seems like they fit in there. Um, it does make sense that we have a ten mile an hour speed limit because you've got people walking baby carriages and small children, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and it, that seems to work. Um, if you got that one-off or two-off that's screaming down the, the, the path there, then somebody usually says something or, 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 you know, deals with that. But for the most part, everybody is cautious and, and careful with each other. And I think it makes sense to adjust our code to meet the reality of what's going on right now. Things have changed dramatically in the last ten years and, uh, and these things are out there and, uh, people are utilizing them and enjoying them. So, uh, let's, let's bring this up to speed and, and, uh, make it work for everybody.
All right. Thank you. Um, thank you, everybody. And, and for me, I'm just looking at Imagine Monroe over there on the wall. You know, it, uh, will help to create a lively center. Um, it'll help to, you know, help out with Goodwill, uh, help out with, uh, you know, reinforcing healthy, accessible environment for people to go out and enjoy. Uh, it certainly is supportive with strengthening connections and for, you know, providing a variety of choices and not just for what's up there, but also for getting around. Oh, activities would be one. So, you know, I, for me, I, I agree, this is, uh, uh, this is something that brings our code up to date and, um, you know, I think that having options to get around town is a good thing. You don't need to hop in a car to go everywhere and, um, I appreciate everybody looking into this. I appreciate council bringing this, I'm sorry, staff bringing this forward and, uh, you know, whatever led this to EDAB recommending you bring this forward. I, I appreciate that. So we'll go ahead and, uh, the staff will take a look at the items that you all have brought up and bring forward uh, some recommended code language. And I think that's it for now. Jacob, did you have anything further to add?
Uh, just to let Mayor know, I've been working on the flux capacitor. We talked about it. It'll be done in a couple of weeks.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Richie can test drive it for me. Okay. Um, so I don't think there's anything else this evening. Uh, there being no objection, we are adjourned. Have a great rest of your week. We're out.